If you press the little button that says, yeah, and then that will get you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Betsy McCray. And I am the board-appointed representative, this board's appointed representative on the Redford Union District, Redford District Library Board. I serve as their treasurer, so I not only jumped in but agreed to handle their money. Crazy. I also, for those of you that don't know me, because I know that there are people that don't, I actually attended Keeler High School in 1959 as a kindergartner. Yeah, yeah. And came back here when I had my son Joey Jones. Because I wanted to have him in Redford Union Schools. And he was part of the special ed program. And he was in it through the age 26. I also had another son many years later who graduated from here in 2011. I wanted him to be a part of the public school system. I have three stepchildren that went to private school. So I've had my hand in all of them and people ask me, what's the best school? And I always tell them the one they're involved in. So that's why I'm here. I, in 2016, I went to Beach Elementary and went into their library and saw that it was a storeroom. And it broke my heart. And Colleen Murphy was working at the time as a Title X person, I think, or nine. And I asked, Pat and I asked, my husband is a supervisor and I was also deputy clerk for 16 years in the township. So we asked for a wish list. She gave us one, was for $340. I said I had to have 34 friends with $10. We ended up raising $2,700. You all have a sheet in front of you about the Friends of Beach Elementary. And to date, we've raised over $30,000 buying books. Next month, I'll be doing another one. And I will continue to raise money for the district for books, for children, so they know how to read. I think that was why Redford Union School Board chose me to be their representative on the main district school board. We are in the midst of reservations, just like you are. We have 18,000 square feet that had never been touched for 19 years. And we are in mid-construction. And I hope on August 25th or 24th, you'll all come to the opening. I'm here to tell you that we have everything to offer your students in the district. Every child in the district should have a library card. Their families need to have that library card. They can get streaming services. They can get books. They can get magazines. They can get, you know, the New York Times and comic books. We have, we don't charge for faxing. You can get on the internet. They can, your students can fill out and, you know, create their resumes and then go over and use our services to mail out to jobs. You know, we have that ability. We have kids that will help with homework, with tutoring. We have events for families. We have, if, if your parents need a break and you need to, you know, take your kid to the library and sit on a couch and read a book while they're being entertained with a million different projects that we have going on constantly. I am so proud of being a part of that library. I am so grateful to you for allowing me the opportunity to do that. And I will do whatever you need to get word to your parents. I'll come to the schools and talk about it. I will talk to teachers so that we get you to take road trips over to the library so that your students can see them. And next year, you know, you're just gonna, you're, you're, just as you talk about what you're doing over there, I can tell you, you're not going to believe how amazing the work that we're doing and what we're opening up for them. So anybody have a question?
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey.
So you're having a fundraiser coming up for our benefits. Is there anything that we, as a board, can do to help you?
Pay 20 bucks and come and enjoy hot hors d'oeuvres, cold hors d'oeuvres. There's a cash bar, so it's an adult evening. And we have about 50 auction items. Anything from five bucks to more that, you know, that you can purchase. Because everything that we're able to do to sell is money that gets to be brought in. And I can tell you, like, one of the years, I got a $1,000 grant and we bought all autobiographies. And I will tell you, you know, I'm a huge Rosa Parks fan, but little girls need more than that. They need to see. And boys need more. And I just couldn't believe opening those books and setting them into the system, which the system, they had, but had no one to put in. So two women and I spent that summer and we scanned in over 12,400 books. So that they could actually use it as a system. The kids could check out. They'd know who had them, check back in. And they'd learn how to behave in a library and we could track what we needed and how many Goosebump books, so. So it would be coming. Spread the word. You know, if you've got nothing to do on that evening, it's over at the AOH. Everything is donated. They donate the hall to me. The people work for free. The, the things that have all been donated are free. So every single penny that is raised will go to the purchasing of books.
That's on April 18th, right?
Yeah, it's a Thursday night. Sure.
Question, sorry. I wanted to know, how many nights per week are you providing tutoring? Or how does your tutoring system work?
I, I believe they have it that you sign up. So if you have a student that needs it, then you would sign them up. And, and I believe it's weekly, but I could be wrong.
I'll start seeing and see.
Yep.
And do you provide just reading programs for adults as well?
Every age group. Every age group, we have reading clubs. And then we start with, you bring your kids in their pajamas and they do bedtime story. And I mean, I, I, my youngest Eddie was three years old when I started taking him to the library and all the way through. So we have the adolescent years. We have the Lego years. We have the manga years. We have all of the different ones. And then there's crafts. There's teenage groups. They had, they did an event where the kids could test which pizzas in Redford were the best. So they all got to come in and taste a different pizza and rate it, so that, which was the best pizza. We try and find innovative ways to bring the kids in the door. And, and you can come and knit every other Saturday, so.
That's fun. Can we learn how to knit?
Well, we don't have a teacher, but I've never known knitters that didn't teach.
It's like, I've crocheted for years and never could master knitting.
I, I was taught by a retired teacher when I was eight and I've knitted my whole life, so. It's what I do to calm myself. Believe it or not, I actually put needles in my hand to calm myself, but.
I know the library's open to everyone and, you know, it's public. But I wanted to know, are you guys, do you guys have a system that can track the actual students that come through to use the library?
Well, if they get a library card, we absolutely can. And you get a library card. And every single student in Redford Union that lives in Redford should sign up for a library card. I, I can't stress enough the value they will get out of it. And their family will get out of it by becoming a member.
And I, if I recall from, I, if I recall, if you have, if you were a Wayne County resident and you live in Detroit, if you have a Detroit library card, I believe you can use that.
We have, there are certain communities that are part of the My Library.
Right.
And that, that, so they can do that. And there's, and I, but I'm not going to say specifically because I, I don't, I don't have the authority to do that. But what I will tell you, so let's say your student gets a card and they go home and they have a grandparent who's homebound in the house with the caretaker. We do homebound deliveries. Not on horses like they did in Kentucky, which makes me sad, but, but we actually have them. And we have games and things that you can, you can actually go and take out a bicycle.
Right.
And go bike riding. But, you know, whether it's pickleball, whether it's games, whether it's books, we have a drive-through window now. Outside, last year, outside, we finished the seating area and you'll see blocks. And they have plugins, so you can come outside and you can sit with your laptop or your Kindle, plug in to charge it while your kids are reading or doing something. And you can be outside using the library. We try and think of everything.
I am pretty new to the school board, so I just wanted to know, how long have you been in your role?
Well, I got reappointed for four years. I finished a term for someone. And so I'm gonna say close to three years.
We're gonna make it a lifetime appointment.
That sounds about right.
Because I was the deputy clerk, I know a lot of people. Because everybody had to, although they all stayed an arm's length away from me during elections because everybody had to work for me. And I'll also bring that up while I have as many hats as I can put on my head, is that every kid that's 16 and older can work an election. They will be trained. They will be paid. And they will be able to put it on as community service and experience on resumes for work and, and college.
Need to get our early college students in there.
And they absolutely need them, particularly now with early voting, you know. And we have two more elections and yes, it'll be in August. But every, you know, all the students should be talked to before the end of the school year. They could be signed up and they could be kept in touch with the clerk's office at town hall. And I know for me, I used to hire over 300 people to work an election. They're going to need more. And, and it's citizenship in its highest form. And everyone should be a part of it.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Bailey.
So there's three things. One, along with this working at the polls, on the news there, they said that age eight, age 16, an individual can register to vote. They can't vote until they're 18.
Correct.
But they can still register, right?
Sure. They can register at, like, so let's say you have a student that's 17 when they're graduating and, you know, during the summer, they're gonna turn 18 and the election is November or, or in August. You can sign them up ahead of time and they would never be eligible to receive the ballot until their birthday or when it was available after that birthday, the first availability.
Okay. Thank you.
But the law changed and we're, and all of the year, almost all of the years I worked for 16 years, we could have students and I hired them.
So I also want to say thank you very much for the effort you're putting in to have the school district, both in your position on the library board, but also in terms of fundraising. Thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
One other thing is, would you do communications paramount to an organization, right?
Yep.
So would you be willing to return on a set basis to report on what's happening and possibilities with the library?
Again, I could talk ad nauseam about the library, so anytime you want to talk to me, I'm happy to be here and tell you about it.
Describe more. Do you think that's a possibility?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Like Ms., her name is Gomillion, right?
Yes, yes. So maybe like once a quarter?
Sure.
Yeah. And so, you know, I've known you for a long time and I know you bleed blue and gold, but I also know you bleed for this community. I can't think of a better representative for this district. Especially with, when it comes to this. So thank you for all that you, you do and all that you have done. I, I've spent countless hours on marching band fundraisers, counting money.
Used to count a lot of that money.
Yes, yes, yes. We were.
But I'll just say that about the band. It made my youngest son's high school years, being able to be in the band. And I, you know, you have to have it. You have to have something for everybody.
I agree totally. 100%. So thank you. Are there any further questions?
How can we, do you actually be in the library or are you just, you know, what's your role? How can we contact you if we wanted to reach out to you?
I can give you my contact information. My husband is a supervisor. You can always call town hall and say, hey, your wife, get her, you know.
We need Betsy.
If you send me your contact information, I'll get it out to the full board.
Sure. Yeah, because I, I think, I don't, you know, maybe you are, you and three other people don't know my phone number, but, you know, it's, that's why we have a landline still.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't know what would happen if we gave up when, you know, people didn't know that, that number. But absolutely, I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to action items. And I'll let the, you guys don't have to come up. Okay, action item number one. Redford Union School District Bond Projects Beach Bus Loop Big Pack Number Nine. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education, as a recommendation of Michael Belting, Chief Financial Officer, and Jason Witt, Superintendent, and the Redford Union Schools Bond Team, approve the firms listed in the Crispin Company Award Recommendation Letter dated March 12th, 2024, for contract award as the lowest possible bidder for the Redford Union School District 2021 Bond Projects Beach Bus Loop. This award recommendation includes the following. Two hard construction, $218,890. Alternates accepted, $54,500. General requirements, $50,000. GLI, $2,425. CM contingency, $8,202. CM fee, $7,515. Bond amounts, $2,605. For a total fee, for a total cost of $344,137. This amount will be paid for from the district's 2021 Capital Bond Projects Fund.
Motion.
It was moved by Mrs. Martin. Is there a second? Can we second it?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Osowski. Is there any discussion?
Chair.
Mr. Bailey.
I have a question. You presented last meeting and I was pondering this. The hard construction, you said you could reinforce at the back of the school where the buses are gonna run. Is that right?
There's a, there's an entire lane that goes through the parking lot that we're reinforcing. We're connecting to the court, you know, the dead-end street. That is a connection point there. But we're actually reinforcing an entire lane that goes down the center of the parking.
Now, when you say reinforce, what are you gonna do?
We are going to put in a heavier base. So like the subgrade, we put a heavier base in, then you put in a deeper cross-section of asphalt.
So, Mr. Thomasides, it wasn't long ago that we redid that parking lot, is that correct?
We did a quick three-inch fill of several very large, I would call it poples, because that doesn't describe it. So we had, we had, during the school year, there was questions about whether this was going to transpire or not. And I had to have traffic there, so yes, we did. Bush Brothers came out and did two, two small patches.
And the front turnaround where the buses come in and whatever, was that reinforced? Or is that just regular parking lot?
That was just regular parking lot and a quick fix. Try and just through.
Now, I haven't walked that parking lot except for going into the school. And for a regular asphalt parking lot, it seems to be holding up pretty good. So you're gonna spend $200,000 to buy the school, create a hole and grow?
If you don't, it'll, the buses will destroy. The weight of the buses would destroy that normal cross-section of parking, yes.
The parking lot's not in good shape at all.
Right, but that turnaround seems to be the same construction, but seems to be old enough. Right? Am I wrong?
So the repair work we did was not in the turnaround. It was farther south in the lot. There was two sections where the buses came and turned. And if you drive through the parking lot again, about 15 feet north of that, it's turning into the same condition that it did before. So it, there's two very large poples that are developing there again. So the, eventually the buses will have their way. So it's a matter of we keep spending $18,000, $17,000 every couple of years and just continue to patch little tiny spots in the parking lot or have a loop沟through that's reinforced. And we also did check and got those vehicle weights on e-buses as we were aware of those five buses that were still waiting. Checked on the difference in the weight so we would make sure they're compliant with heavier electric buses.
And they're heavier than what we have now?
Slightly, yes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
To the chair.
Mr. Osowski.
Couple of questions. I walked the parking lot. Are you, what kind of gate are you putting in the back? Because right now you have playground equipment out back. Security, I've been told, has to stay there because parents have tried to pick kids up from that fence and it's six foot tall. So my concern is you're putting a gate that can drive through. Are we moving the playground equipment? You're not gonna get a 90-degree turn really quick without getting within 10 or 12 feet of the playground equipment.
Yes, it's, in all likelihood, we will be not only relocating the playground equipment, but ideally getting some new playground equipment for that building.
I understand, I'm just going off this bit. There's been nothing about safety. There's nothing about the playground equipment. You, you guys said you talked to the administrative and staff and all this. This has been going on for two years or better, the buses, trying to figure out how to get the buses to come through. And I understand it, but how much of the parents, staff, have you actually talked to about moving it back? YMCA brings their kids out every day, walk into that field.
And everything that's done can be done differently, Mr. Osowski. And this is exactly why, if you had concerns, I heard that you might have some concerns regarding this project and I reached out to you to see what those concerns were.
I walked it this weekend. I walked it when they had a Wayne Rees meeting down here. I wanted to see what it was like. That's my concern. My concern is, you want me to vote? You want me to spend $300,000?
Was there a reason why you couldn't have brought those concerns to me before tonight?
Well, I didn't notice how close they were to the turning area.
But if you walked it this weekend, today's Tuesday.
Yes. Yesterday, I worked late. I'm sorry. I didn't call you because I won't call you after 4 o'clock.
Okay, I appreciate that.
You, you have a life. I have a life.
Hey, I appreciate that.
So that's, my concern with it is, you want me to vote on something, but you don't even know.
I know this, that's a prob, there still is an existing significant traffic flow problem at that location. I know this. We told the voters of this community when they voted on the bond that that building would get a new bus loop. It was, it was in the materials from the onsite.
That's fine, because there's other.
I was told that, I know for a fact that that parking lot is in significant disrepair. In particular, the area that we're looking to replace and improve here through what's recommended. So the bottom line is, ultimately, I mean, the bottom line is it's the will of the board. That remains to be seen with regards to this project. But we're not recommending a project that we don't think not only would improve conditions significantly, but ultimately, we have an opportunity to use bond funds to do some work. And the bottom line is, we're gonna pay significant dollars to replace that parking lot and the existing asphalt anyway. And if we don't do it with bond proceeds, we're gonna have to find money in the general fund in order to do this.
We're gonna take general fund money anyway because we're over budget on the whole bond right now. That's their comment. Second comment, I'll respond to that, is Plant Run, as our owner-operator is not here. We've asked them to be at any of the votes. That's, the board has asked them to be here with it. You're doing three, $2.2 million without our owner rep here. I understand I got a letter, but I'd like to ask him questions. Who looked at the safety of this? What kind of gate? I'm taking your word that everything's gonna be fine. Problem is, I'm voting taxpayer dollars to say, we might have an idea how to put a gate in there. We might be secure with our thing. We might move the playset. We're gonna get new play equipment. That's great. Put it all in one package. Don't pick and choose and, well, it's in our thoughts. It's in our crosshairs to make sure that everybody's safe. I'd rather see a complete package than half a package that has questions with no stuff on security for our students. Nothing's more important than the security of our students. Knowing that people have tried picking kids up there with a six-foot fence and you're gonna put, what? with a six-foot fence, and you're going to put what? We don't know what kind of gate there to bring buses in. That's a big question. That's a safety issue. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Osowski. I have some questions too, and they're similar to Mr. Osowski's. I am concerned about the impact of... And the cost of the impact of our playground equipment and the safety of our children. I don't know how... That playground equipment isn't that old, right? I mean, help... Just help me remember.
I'm not aware of any playground equipment being purchased at that site since I've been here.
Okay, so...
So if it was purchased, I'm not aware of that.
Miles, do you know how old that playground equipment is? When we converted it maybe to second through fifth grade? So it's older than I think.
That northeast parking area?
Yeah, okay.
What is there?
Swing sets.
Swing sets. There were some tetherball courts?
They've got...
Okay.
They sort of got hit in more of the policy sessions. I do know that. But that's... That's what is there now?
Okay. And I am concerned about them crossing the bus loop to get to the field during the day, just because, God forbid, something happened. The alternates accepted the $54,500, if I recall. That's for the repaving, so that it's all cohesive, right?
Well, it's not the entire existing. It's once you get into the cross-section, normally, there's some, you know, field conditions that you have to, you know, patch and repair certain areas. So that's to cover that.
So the follow-up to that is, did we not repave that parking lot when we did those paving? And that's been a few years too. So I know it's Michigan. Our weather is hard on our roads. Was that not one of the ones we did like five years ago?
It was over there. I remember, because Bush Brothers was out there. Was it 2015?
Okay, so it's longer than I thought. Okay. Okay. Just, you know, try to get timeframes in my head.
Some... They did some restryft, and also they did some... They did some... We did CO-4.
That's what we did. Thank you. I was just, you know, after a few years, it all just kind of starts to run together.
Can I address the six-foot fence really quick?
Yes, please.
There is a six-foot gate that's going in there, right? Now, the standard operating procedures, which I'd have to ask Miles about, that is something that the district would have to be involved in. Like, when does the gate get locked? How does it get locked? This is just a standard swinging six-foot gate. So I... But it is going, I mean, like at any time in off-hours or, I mean, even through the day, assuming you don't have buses going in and out through the day, you can close this and lock it.
And that is... That is the plan for the gate. The plan is that the gate will be opened for arrival time and then closed after arrival time has ended. And then someone will have the responsibility to go out and open the gate before buses begin to arrive for pickup.
Also, with regards to the playground equipment, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the playground equipment is just south of that dead end. And we are just going, like, as soon as we come in, you know, we're coming off the side of that dead end or that corridor or that court. So we're not affecting that playground equipment at all. In fact, it's staying inside the fenced area.
Okay.
When you come in on the angle that you're drawing shows, you're coming from the dead end, coming across like at a 90-degree?
No, we have... When Jake over at Spalding does this, we actually have a 40-foot radius, which, when we do those radii, we know what the bus radii is. Like, if we had a semi coming through, for instance, we'd use a 60-foot. So he's actually calculated this, so that the correct radius is in there for a bus.
So it's not coming directly towards the playground area?
No. No, it's literally coming off the side of the court. Not the... Like, if this is the court coming down here, it's coming off the side, but there's a 40-foot radius right here coming in.
And the radius is to the north of that new drive, so it's not impacting the playground equipment to the south of that dead end.
Correct.
Mr. Bailey?
So there's two fences, right? The one fence by the cul-de-sac, and the other is the south of the playground equipment, right?
I think there's a backstop back there, but I don't... There's a second fence. Yeah, it's a second fence.
There's a backstop there, but there's a fence that leads also into the south end of the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two different fences.
You don't see that fence, right?
What's that?
That fence that's on the south side where the playground equipment is.
We're not going through that fence.
Yeah, I'll see that.
I think we're going to the... I mean, if I'm looking at this correctly, north is... Which way is north here? Yeah, if north is up, we're coming in through the west of the court.
Do you want to pull that up? Is there any way we can pull that up?
And then, I mean, if it's a loop, ideally, okay. In theory, they're coming in one end and out the other, so really, we need two gates.
No, because they're coming out. The loop goes through the parking lot, and then it exits... What's the road on the south end of?
Gotcha. Okay.
Tembro. It comes out of Tembro.
So Estimate, how far are you from the actual playground?
Well, I understand the playground is coming up, and it's a concern. I want to speak to that from an operational standpoint. There won't be kids on the playground when the buses are picking up or dropping off kids.
So like, for instance, kids like come to school early sometimes. Kids sometimes come to school early and they play. So what's going on there? Because they could be there early.
The playground space will be monitored in the mornings and at pickup time to ensure that kids are not on the playground. That's one of the benefits of having partnered with SafeEd to have people on-site for things like that. But there will be a bus pickup time and a bus drop-off time, and we will operationally make sure that kids are safe, as we do every single day now, during bus pickup time and drop-off time. So again, no one has more concerns for school safety than I do and student safety. This bus loop is not going to present any additional risk the way it was designed and the way it will be taken care of operationally. And it will significantly improve the traffic flow in the area, which I can go back to meetings at the beginning of the year that Mrs. Nickel and I had with David Ellis and their staff. And again, we've heard from the Township Police Department continually throughout this year about what issue it is at pickup and drop-off time in that area. This will significantly improve the traffic flow in that area at pickup and drop-off time.
Sorry.
So do we use the bus loop at Hilbert for buses?
Turnover, I think.
Right, we're dropping off on the side street, right? The buses...
North and south.
Right. Can we speak to why we're not using?
Well, we can speak to why, sure. I can't speak to particulars of why. I can say this. The previous principal at Hilbert came up with a plan that she believed and was the best way for traffic drop-off and pickup to function. And I can tell you that in discussions already with our interim principal that I've had, she believes there's a much better solution to pick up and drop off of buses. So we will be looking at that, but we're not going to change things mid-year when everybody's accustomed to the way they are. But do I expect that pick-up and drop-off will look different at Hilbert next year? I certainly expect it will, based on some initial conversations that I've had with Mrs. Birch.
Thank you, because, I mean...
But I can't speak to specifically why they settled on the approach that they settled on.
I think my point is, we spent a lot of money on a bus loop there that isn't being used as a bus loop. And I would certainly hate to see us do that here. So we need to make sure that this is going to work and actually be a bus loop and not a parent drop-off loop.
So as you can see on Olympia, this is an existing court. There's a fence that comes through here, a fence here. We have gates here, so those can be closed when it's not in use. But it comes directly off on the west end here, and then comes through the parking lot. We actually have gates going in here as well.
Okay, so two sets of gates. Yeah.
What do you mean by the term gates pretty wide?
They're swinging 30-foot wide gates. Like, they... So, I mean, you have a rolling sliding one at the high school here, so that's a little different. These are actually square gates. But yeah, you can lock these over that. And I believe the playground equipment is somewhere over here.
Is that right?
Is it over here?
Nope, go right over there, the white block square. The white square, right it, go straight up.
Right at the top.
Looks to start closer.
Yep, that's the playground equipment, right.
Okay, so we're not even doing anything over there.
Okay.
So, but the buses coming in.
There's a playground coming in here too.
But the entrance part is right there. Where you see those two circles? Yeah, that's the entrance part. So it's going to go past it, so it's coming around.
Yeah, it's coming around here, but nobody would be at the playground, as Mr. would say. Nobody would be at it. They would be monitored. Nobody would be at it.
And is there a fence between, like, where the pavement is and the playground then?
Is there a fence?
Like, right there, yeah.
Nope, it's wide open.
It's a wide open area. Yeah, but we know how kids are though, but...
Until something tragic happens.
The problem I have is with that, if the gates are left open unattended, what stops parents from driving in? How many times did the bus loop right in front of the high school? I'd seen Mr. Taylor out there, Miss Knoppen out there, saying, "Nope, no cars allowed yet." Guess what? They get behind the bus, they're right into the road.
The gates will be locked after bus arrival time as part of the standard operating procedure. I mean, we can honestly, we can what-if a lot of this, and I want to be respectful and make sure your questions get answered. And again, I assure you that no one at this table stays awake at night as often as I do, concerned about student safety. And I'm not discounting how much you guys care about student safety, but I assure you that I am all about student safety.
Question. Right now, you see where... How we're doing the entrance coming around? What's there right now? How are the... Is that right now? Is that a drive? Or how do parents drop off kids? Are they using the same route? What's happening?
It's a dead end street. There's nothing.
There's nothing right there.
It's completely sealed off.
Oh, so there's no... Ah, I see.
Right now, there's a fence... There's like a fence in a U shape in that area.
Oh, yeah, yes, ma'am. I was just trying to see, was that area, like, where the playground? Was it like, it's locked off, right?
There's a fence around the cul-de-sac there, and there's a fence at the end of the building on that far side. It's by where the dumpsters are on the side of each. There's an existing fence there.
And parents are dropping off currently, right, if I'm correct, along the David Ellis side in that parking lot right there, which I'm sure makes... You get the David Ellis parents dropping off and the beach parents. I've been over, like, I know the traffic over there is a nightmare. And I'll say, I don't think there's anybody at this table who doubts anyone in this room's commitment to safety, right? I think that what we are trying to do is make sure that, as the stewards of this property and these bond funds, that we ask the right questions and we, you know... Because ultimately, that's what the people of Redford Township and the Redford Union School District have elected us to do. Okay. Are there any further questions? All right, this requires a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Dina is absent. Mrs. Martin?
I'm going to have to say no.
Mrs. Miller? Mrs. Moore's?
No.
Mr. Osowski?
No.
The Chair votes no. This motion fails. Four to... I'm sorry. Yes, four to. I don't know what the next step is on that. All right, moving on.
Can I ask this question before we move on?
Yes.
So for those who voted no, is it worth us... Like, what do you not know about it? Is there any way you could be persuaded to vote for that? Like, what is it that you don't see that when we presented this the last time, there weren't questions raised? So I'm just thrown for a loop that there was this level of concern, and I'm not questioning it. You guys are the board members. But I'm telling you, a bus loop is needed at that site.
I agree that something needs to be done. My whole thing is, we get pictures and diagrams of every single thing throughout the district, throughout every bid package. We've got... We get title samples. We get seat samples. I just want to see something that shows the safety.
So this was a matter of not having enough information? I just want to understand.
Up until walking it and seeing how close, when you look at the picture, it doesn't look very far apart. But when, even Miles said it, when they're plowing the snow, they get close enough where they hit and tear down a tetherball court. I don't want to have a kid hit by the swing set. You've got YMCA there. You've got our kids out there playing. Up until I heard that there was a parent that tried picking a kid up through a six-foot fence, that was a big concern to me. I know we have guards out there. I know we have SafeEd out there when the kids are out there. That's great. My problem is some different kind of gate, something that's not open, because I know it's...
But it's not going to be open all the time. So help me understand... Again, I'm just trying to figure out a way, because we need a solution at that site.
To me, kids are going to be walking through there to cut through the school, because they can come right down there and cut through the fence to get through there. I'm worried that a kid's going to be there. You don't... Even the diagrams, where's lighting? You know, I don't see any lighting. It gets dark in the morning. Kids could be there playing. Anybody could be there playing. My whole concern is just... I'd like to have seen more detail in what kind of gate it is, what kind of security features we're going to have, something like that, just so we know that I can answer to the parents and say, "Hey, yeah, it was addressed." Walking it was a big deal to me when I saw. I haven't been there since the last bond once or twice, but I've never walked behind the building. I coached soccer there. I know, you know? But I'm worried about having a gate that is open only a couple hours, an hour in the morning, an hour at night, and parents are going to use it to drop off. They'll squeeze in somehow, some way. If there's a principal here that can tell me that nobody doesn't follow behind the bus or just pulls where they're not supposed to, I'd really be amazed. And that's every school. 100%. That's my biggest thing, is I just want to make sure it's secure. They're some of the littlest kids. And I do know the bus loop is needed there. I was an opponent of Hilbert's bus loop in the front. I started that. We were big on that. And we listened to all the tree people saying how much we're cutting all the trees down. Miles is destroying the forest over there to put a bus loop there.
Shame on you, Miles.
And I just... My whole thing is, I just want to see what we're going to... A plan. That's more of what it is. It's more to me. I'm one member.
Right, so you want to see more information?
And I guess for me, actually hearing the information today, I am in agreeance, we need a loop. But knowing that area, the playground area itself, does not have a fence in front of it, that's alarming for me.
And for me, I'll say, yes, we did get this, you know, information at the last board meeting. It does, for me, it takes some time to get it all into my head. You know, I'm not an expert at reading those diagrams. It is the safety concerns, but also, and I do agree that we need some, a solution there. I also believe that as we have a responsibility to deliver what we promised, we certainly do not want... If you all follow the news at all, you know, West Bloomfield is on the hot seat right now, because they got their voters to approve some money to restore a 104-year-old building, and they didn't use that bond money for that. They're not going to deliver to their constituents. I certainly don't want... They're going to tear that building down, as a matter of fact. I certainly don't want us to be that bored. Yeah, it is just the playground, how it impacts the playground specifically. And like, I know we say, in a perfect world, we're going to close that gate every day and lock it until somebody... And, like, I know we say, in a perfect world, we're gonna close that gate every day and lock it until somebody doesn't do their job.
Exactly.
Right? And we can, and you're right, we can what-if back and forth all day, right? Um, I just need a little more assurances that the kids specifically crossing that and that playground are safe from a bus driver who may not know how to handle their bus.
Okay, understood. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to share?
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
Ms. Crenshaw thinks that she can produce some maps of the site, so if she can get them out to you, and you walk the site, I like what Mr. Witt said, but it's not the way he was saying it. It's the what-if situations, if we have more minds on this, and we can see things that other people can't see, this is your opportunity.
Absolutely.
A bus loop is needed there, that traffic is, kids can get killed with the traffic, as it is now.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's anybody here who, who believes that we, who doesn't believe we need a bus loop. I would say, um, but we also, and we know, the situation we have isn't ideal, a child could get hurt just as easily, probably more easily right now, because you have idiot parents, sorry, who, who are, who don't follow the rules, right? And we're dealing with a very small area for our buses to come in, I'm sure that impacts the traffic on Beach daily. Um, I, I don't think, I would, I would like to see some maps, and I know I haven't been over there to walk it, and shame on me, um, for not having done that. Um, I would say, maybe just give us some assurances on security and bring this back to us at the April meeting, and hopefully we'll...
Okay, we'll go back to the drawing board.
Appreciate that, yeah.
No, you don't have to go back to the drawing board, it's just, the concern, address the concerns here, you've got most of the work already done, so it's not insurmountable.
I, I don't think it's insurmountable at all, I wanted to understand what the concerns were.
Yeah.
I have an understanding of what the concerns are, so I just wanted to, now's the time, because no one called me before this meeting to express that they had concerns.
Um, and then, I believe Mrs. Miller has a question about the playground.
Yeah, I, I think, um, we just, our concern are the kids, but the playground area is a bit concerned, maybe we can add a gate?
We already talked about that, yeah, like a fence around with a gate, yep.
Yeah, that, that seems to be a concern.
The, the gate, the gate at Olympia, I think it was, that, to me, is going to be something that I don't know how you, I mean, unless you, unless we have the district write a standard operating procedures menu, I guess, and then we implement that, but that's the only way I could see addressing that issue itself. Because that's something that, as a district, that's what we have to do.
Right.
Unless we got a gate that was actually like card access, which would be crazy expensive.
We'll have a discussion as a team, I understand the concerns. I just wanted to make sure that I understood the concerns, so that we can address them, thank you.
Because the school's in operation too, this particular scope of work isn't slated until summer anyway, so we do have...
So we have some time.
...to bring you more information on the...
And it doesn't impact, like, do we impact the ability to have it done by fall by asking you to bring us some information at the April board meeting?
Not that I can see.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Are we ready to move on to the next one? Um, number two, Redford Union School District, 2021 Bond Projects, Old School House Interior Renovation Bid Pack Number 10. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education, at the recommendation of Michael Beltink, Chief Financial Officer, and Jason Witt Superintendent, and the Redford Union Schools Bond Team, approve the firms listed in the Crisman Company Award Recommendation Letter dated March 12th, 2024, for contract award as the lowest responsible bidder for the Redford Union School District 2021 Bond Projects Old School House Interior Renovations? This award recommendation includes the following: Hard Construction, $533,806; Allowance for Steel Alternate, $50,900; General Requirements, $40,500; GLI, $4,689; CM Contingency, $17,541; CM Fee, $14,567; Bond Amounts, $5,050, for a total of $667,053. This amount will be paid for from the district's 2021 Capital Bond Project Funds.
Motion.
Moved by Mrs. Martin, is there second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey, is there any discussion?
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
So again, you made your presentation at the last meeting, and I was thinking about this. On our website, uh, in the history of that schoolhouse, it mentioned that it was from the designs of the Michigan superintendent, whatever, right? So, I'm seeing that, that, you know what a ward, a Montgomery Ward package house was, right?
Yes.
So, I think, it wasn't a package, but I think what they did is they had standard plans, that they produced these things across the state of Michigan. So I'm willing to lay odds that you could get a set of drawings of this building already, that you can just eyeball and see if anybody, the carpenter modified it at all, which may help you quite a bit. And I imagine the Michigan Library, uh, has that, the museum, a call to them can probably give you a set of plans. Or Google it, they might already be there, scanned in.
I mean, we had the historic pictures that were on there, and the building, for the most part, other than the bathrooms being added after they no longer needed outhouses, that was like the big change in that building. Then we add, you could tell where it was added, the partial wall, um, in the, what we're calling the student side. But in the other side, it was pretty much, I mean, wha- what it was in the pictures, and that's what we're going off, was the historic pictures. And we actually contacted the Historic Society, and that's how we determined, you know, what we were doing. Actually, Miles, Mr. Thomasitis was, I think you had quite a bit of conversations with the Historic Society, um, in, in regards to that.
Um, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll go. So, I believe that it is our responsibility to protect and maintain this building. I also recall that when we first started this fund, we were very clear that we were not open to, at that time, spending more than $500,000 on the building, because we firmly believe, the board at the time firmly believe, that the best use for the money that our voters gave us is to further our students' education abilities. You came at this last meeting and told us that with this $667,000, we were under budget. We're not under budget, because our original budget was $500,000. So we're really $667,000 over budget on the Old School House, and we still don't know how much the facade that we've asked to be cover up, to cover up the ugly gray is gonna cost. So we're $667,000 plus this facade over what the past board had originally felt comfortable allocating to the building. My concern is our overall bond budget, and the fact that we've used S R funds to stay on track, and that if we hadn't had S R funds, we didn't have S R funds in our general budget right now, and we didn't have a cell phone tower cell in our budget right now, we would be a deficit district, and I'm not sure that $667,000 on a building that we don't really have a plan for is responsible spending.
Okay, so with regards to that, a change order has already been approved, because it was well under the $100,000 threshold for the, to complete the ramp.
Okay.
And I wanna say it was roughly $50,000, $55,000 to do the full-scale ramp, like, where all the sides that are visible...
Inside and out.
Inside and out are wrapped. So that's that piece, um... I understand what you're saying on the other piece, I do know this, we did review things recently, and because of a lot of factors, in fact, Mr. Beltink and I were there on Friday at Plant Moran's offices. We're doing well overall with the scope of the work that's left and the available dollars we have left. So I'm comfortable that, I wouldn't be making this recommendation if I didn't think we're still on a good pace to complete everything that we set out to do. And I wouldn't be recommending this now if I wasn't comfortable with the fact that we're gonna have the funds we need to have to complete the projects that we have remaining.
Are we completely bid out on the football field, uh, uh, have all those, help me remember?
Yes, the, that work is already...
Right, I'm just...
Bid out.
Because, you know, that's a pretty...
And those contracts have all been awarded and everything else.
Right, I was, I'm just trying to get point of reference here. I think my concern, my concern is, again, delivering what we promised to our community, making sure we've improved the quality, and I know we have improved the quality of education and our buildings for our students, and that we continue to do so. And that we don't, we don't, I'm, I'm gonna tell you what, I'm really concerned about what we're gonna run into that we don't know yet with that football field. That's a big undertaking, it's a big dollar amount, and I certainly don't want us to be pulling general fund dollars to complete something. And that's, that's just my concern, I wanna be fiscally responsible with the $59 million that our taxpayers generously approved. Um, so that's just, you know, but again, I also feel like we have a responsibility, it's like this tightrope. We have a responsibility to protect that historical building that is entrusted to us, right? So, that, that's just where I stand. Is there any further discussion?
So if we scaled back on, um, one, I wasn't aware of that it was already, like, um, that, the, the original discussion of $500,000, I wasn't, but then two...
I had to go back.
And then two, um, as relates to the, uh, the, the boardroom area of the schoolhouse, can we scale back in that area? Or is that like a huge cost in the construction?
I, I don't know the breakdown of the, of the costs.
We do not have that.
What's that?
We don't have that broken.
Yeah. Um, the fact, I, I guess, tha- that side of the construction probably, I don't even know which side has more construction costs, honestly, because that side has the two new bathrooms that are ADA accessible. So, it's, the, most of the cost is in those bathrooms on that side, to be able to scale back, honestly, I don't think you can on that side of the building, because other than those two bathrooms, you're just doing finish upgrades.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
Also on that old building, is the plumbing being updated? Or are we going with the old stuff?
I can't recall, um, exactly how much of the plumbing, but obviously, the plumbing that goes to the, um, existing, from the new toilet room, I don't think we are replacing the existing toilet room that's on the other side of the school, uh, you know, the student side. But that was more of a historic-type building. Um, I do know it's getting two new furnaces. Do you know of the drawings? I think he's pulling up the drawings right now.
I know we talked originally about, um, making this building, um, available to our community to have, you know, club meetings, or, um, girls' club meetings, or whatever in the building. Have we, do we know if there's any actual interest in them using it, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, there is additional cost, and was set off at the very, very, very earliest stages. But, again, we're doing well overall from a bond project perspective. Have we been the beneficiary of a lot of, of some different things and some different funding sources? Yes, but I consider that fortunate on our part. Um, and the bottom line is, in order to make that a usable, functional space for groups to use, for our own students to use and be brought to, for our own internal uses from a district standpoint as a meeting space, for field trips for our own students, for field trips from other districts, for community meetings and the like, yes, I've been told there is an interest in using that space, and to bring it up to how we have to do, so there can be people actually occupying that space...
This is what we have to do.
This is what we have to do.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
And I don't think, the, the only thing, point I'll add, is I, this is, from everything I can tell, based on the numbers I've seen, this is not gonna detract from anything we set out to do for our current students in the buildings that we're renovating, or the additional space that we're adding.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Osowski?
Quick question, approximately how much was the cupola and the ramp, do we know, rough?
Uh, not off the top of my head, but we can certainly follow up with that information.
Because that number is not included with that $667, right?
Correct, this is just the interior upgrades.
So, from Ms. Pridey's point, the $500,000, we're probably pushing close to a million?
When we add this...
The cupola was part of the exterior renovations.
Yeah, I was just curious how much we spent, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, that's why I thought maybe they knew what we spent on the cupola and the side ramp, or the exterior portion.
As far as the plumbing, there was an alternate that was done to replace, I think, the plumbing from the bathroom to the existing, but everything else is, um, just existing. The new bathrooms do get connected to the existing, uh, that alternate was not accepted, though, for the, for the existing bathroom to the existing connection point.
So most of it is still the old gas center?
Yes.
Did we by any chance video the pipes, to see the condition from the building to the sewer?
No, we did not.
Two years ago, we videoed the pipes because we ended up replacing out of hand, we ended up replacing before the, the actual quote, that. We ended up replacing the connection to the street, because that had collapsed, and had to be replaced. So there was video at that time.
You guys make a copy of it?
I can contact Service Department, follow up with that.
If you can, please, I'd love to take a look at that.
I assume they hang on to the, their video on?
Yep. Promise I'll all the...
Do you mind telling them?
Yeah.
To, to answer Mr. Osowski's question regarding the exterior, it's actually in Bid Pack Three, which was the auditorium, CTE upgrades. Um, so we don't have that number specifically called out, or pulled out, I guess.
We could certainly do that exercise, I'll give that number.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is everybody good, we're ready to vote? All right, this requires a roll call vote, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dean is absent, Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore's?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski? Mr. Osowski abstains. The chair votes yes. Motion carries five zero. We'll move on. This is the big one. All right, dumb item number three, Redford Union School District, 2021 Bond Projects, Secondary Campus Furniture Procurement. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education, at the recommendation of Michael Beltink, Chief Financial Officer, and Jason Witt Superintendent, and the Redford Union Schools Bond Team, approve D U L Learning Environment Specialist as the selected supplier for the secondary campus furniture? This order is within the budget allowance for furniture as part of the overall 2021 bond program. Upon completion and review of the proposal from D U L, the project team is recommending a not-to-exceed amount of $1,242,766 to ensure delivery and installation for the 2024, 2025 school year. This award recommendation includes the following: Secondary Campus Building, D U L Proposal, $1,156,061; Project Contingency, $86,705, for a total bid of $1,242,766. Additionally, the funding sources for this particular recommended purchase will be... a combination of 2021 Capital Bond Project Funds and Food Service Funds as permissible. Moved. Moved by Mrs. Martin. Is there a second?
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. Moore's. Is there any discussion?
To the Chair.
Mr. Bailey?
Ma'am, are you part of this company, or are you representing this company?
I'm with French, I'm the interior designer, and I work with DUAL for the furniture procurement.
So, on page 20 here, this is for my application, there's this little, it's 27 inches by 30 inches, 30.5 by, they, they can't be either, by 1.25.
What line number are you on?
101.
Is it the mini, the diamond table?
Yeah, is that to make a bigger table?
Yes.
And that's why there's 428 of them?
Correct. Yes.
Just, just a concern on my part is, small sizes of this stuff make great throwing.
Great for throwing?
Throwing.
Okay.
So, trying to anticipate things before they happen. I, I just wanna put that down as a concern I have. Also, um, are these pieces gonna be coming to a large extent, or do they have to be assembled, or do they just pulled off the truck and put in the room?
They all are assembled on-site. So, they will be delivered, um, and assembled on-site. Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Witt, do we have a plan to potentially purchase office furniture for Beach? I believe they're the only building that hasn't received new office furniture.
I'm sorry, um, President, what did you ask?
I'm sorry, I was asking about office furniture for Beach because I believe they're the only building that hasn't received new office furniture, so if I'm incorrect, please.
You're incorrect.
Okay.
But, um, I mean, there will be a plan to purchase office furniture. We are actually purchasing some office furniture with general fund dollars right now because we have a secondary source that we found, and it's been more economical for those particular pieces to get them. And I don't know what you've been told, but the principal at Beach Elementary has had one of the nicer main office furnitures, at least for her own individual office. She was one of the first ones to get it from Mr. Thomasitis. And, but essentially, yes, we are, there is a plan to replace the office furniture, but there are plenty of other spaces, including myself and Ms. Crenshaw and others, as it should be. We don't have new office furniture either.
I, I think my point is. Okay. I think my point is, if we bought, if we bought secretaries in one building new office furniture, why would we not buy secretaries? Right? So, I just wanna make sure.
Other than the high school where they got a brand-new office and they didn't.
The high school got a brand-new office space.
But that's because we had to create a new space.
Right. So, so it didn't make sense there to put outdated furniture in the new space.
Absolutely. I just wanna make sure we're being equitable.
Of course.
Right? You know, I know my little friend in one building got something new and I did, and I'd be like, why does she get new?
Well, actually, when that, whoever that is, when they end up getting theirs, theirs will be newer.
See? All right, okay. I just, I just wanna be.
So, then they'll, they'll be the envy of everyone.
All right.
But yes, there's a plan for office furniture too, and even in this space here, there is a portion of office furniture that made the most sense for various reasons to move forward and make a part of this purchase. But then, actually, earlier today, Mr. Thomasitis and I met, and he's also working with the other potential supplier as far as some individual office furniture goes. So, we, we've, again, tried to stretch our dollars as much as possible.
Absolutely.
And, um, but yes, the ultimate goal, just like every teacher got new workstations, except there are a couple that don't have one yet, we, by the end of this, all staff members will have new stuff.
Thank you.
And it's been a long time coming in a lot of cases.
It has, and that's why it's, you know, that's why I ask questions, because it's important, um, to have, let them have nice stuff, because they work hard for us.
And the first thing on the top of the list, one of the first things on the top of the wish list, which I do believe will have some funds available, even when we get to the end of this, is looking at, Beach had had new student furniture more recently than any other building.
Right, through a SIG grant.
Through the school improvement grant funds, and those students getting new furniture as well, and those spaces where we already didn't, because we did purchase some new furniture for Beach, that, that student furniture's on the top of the list.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, are there any further questions? All right, roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Mrs. Moore's?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Sorry, we're such a pain tonight. You guys are off the hot seat, Mike's up next.
Clear on that, I understand that this is taxpayer money, and you guys are the stewards along with myself, and I understand that, that we're spending a lot of money throughout this project.
I got a question. This is kind of related, but about the outlook of Hilbert, that building, it's like, when you see that building.
That building is old.
Yeah. I was just wondering, was that not in the, in like, our decision to make any changes with Hilbert? That was not one of our buildings we selected to make changes to?
It's got a lot of interior changes, but.
They're getting a lot of interior changes this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking about the outside of it, the building, yeah, that's all, like, when you first come up to it.
You're talking like, just like curb appeal?
Yeah. That's all.
You guys haven't been down to Fort Worth, have you?
No. Not in a while.
Hundred-year-old, hundred, I don't know what it is, 120-years-old school was down on Fort Worth?
Oh, I've been a long time ago, like, when Mark was still in high school, I was there, but it was nighttime, so I don't remember. All right, we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We promise not to be so hard on you next time. Actually, I ain't making that promise. Okay, we will move on to the 2023-2024 mid-year budget. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education, at the recommendation of Michael Belting, Chief Financial Officer, and Jason Witt Superintendent approve the 2023-2024 mid-year budget as presented? Moved by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Osowski. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call. Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore's?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Call to the audience, public participation regarding non-agenda items. Y'all just have any desire to just tell us how much you love us? All right, okay. Uh, Board of Education, communication and discussion? All right. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, March 19th, today. Boardwalk workshop immediately following this special meeting, right here in this room. Monday, April 8th, 2024, regular board meeting, 5:30 PM, again, here at McGowan School in the district meeting room. And Tuesday, April 23rd, board workshop, 5:30 PM, McGowan School, district meeting room. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Moved by Mr. Osowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Moore's. Is there any discussion? Hearing all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:51. We will take a short break, and we will then go into the board workshop.